All right, let's call to order the April 9th, 2013 meeting of the Acton School Committee. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Just for information for the audience and the board, Kevin is not here this evening, and Tricia is not here this evening, but Tricia will be coming to us.
Yes, so I've heard.
In a special way.
Well, I think we do have one adjustment for new business, and that's we have to vote on the calendar, the school calendar?
I would prefer that you...
Don't?
That you don't vote on it. It's a draft. I want you to carefully review it. We can adopt it at the next meeting.
We have time to?
We have time.
All right.
What about the number for the executive session? The negoti-- I don't know the numbers there.
Nine.
But that's already, yeah.
Okay, well, we don't need to say whatever, okay.
Okay, all right, let's move on then. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 12th, 2013.
Well, there has to be a change because under executive session, there are motions made, and you can only make motions after executive session. So if you just move that last paragraph up under executive session, then we could make the motions that we decided in executive session. So just move that up.
Because we always do that, just in reverse. We exit executive session, then we vote if we're going to vote on it.
So do you want to move those...
It's not a contract.
Do you want to move those motions down to here? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, we're not on that one. We're on this one.
Okay.
We're on the regular meeting right now.
The regular meeting. So move that up, but it wasn't the superintendent's contract that we approved in the first one. Wasn't it just the thing that went to the state?
Executive session, it was the motion to approve. It was the motion to approve...
The EFA 605.
Thank you.
The EFA, write it right in there.
605.
605, which is our indication to the State Department that we do, in fact...
Have a certified superintendent. So that's all. It was just, we were getting something to the state. So it wasn't the actual contract.
To approve the EF 605, state form, for the superintendent. You can put that down if you want. State form for the superintendent. Does that sound good, Mary?
Yep.
We went to executive session to discuss the bids, and then came out and voted on it?
Yes.
No, no. We forgot to do it under new business.
Right.
So, but that's when we did it, after executive session. So I say, keep that after executive session.
All of it after, okay.
We voted after.
Okay.
Keep what one after?
Sorry, there's three of them under executive session. The middle one should have been done under new business that evening, but when we came out of executive session, we went, ah, we forgot to motion on that, the bid, the bus bid.
Of keeping that one after executive session?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the other two, I'm moving above executive session, correct?
Yes.
You have nine executive session.
Yes.
The third one goes right under it, and then the other two can remain as is. You know, if you just move that one paragraph up to there, right?
Because you can't...
I don't think we did this, we didn't do this EF 605 in executive session.
No.
We did that in regular session.
Right.
So, that really belongs up before...
You could put it under new business.
Well, it goes, it should be, Jennifer, that first paragraph under executive session.
Okay, the first motion?
The first motion. That should be up above the motion where Kevin makes the motion to go into executive session.
So after parent involvement.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
All right, so that gets moved.
Then Kevin made the motion to go into executive session, and then, under executive session, you can put, first of all, Mary made the motion to exit executive session.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And then the motion about the bid.
Underneath that. Got it.
Okay?
All right. Now I accept the minutes as revised.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes as revised. All in favor? Do we have the minutes?
Yes, we all have the minute.
To the other one?
Special meeting.
Special meeting you also have.
Yeah, to the special meeting.
Oh, I thought you said she had them.
She did. I gave her one that day, but that's all right. Here.
You can have another.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
I just want to keep it with this one, that's all.
Right.
Okay, now I will look for...
Okay, another couple of changes on the special one from April 2nd.
Hold on a second.
Do you have that one?
I don't have that one here.
I can give you one.
Thank you.
On page two, just turn it over, you'll see all the articles, then you see Paul Point, and then in there should be Mark Lowell commented upon the need for, okay, so that should be moved up because then Mary made the motion to go into executive session. I don't know, Mark was definitely not in our executive session, so.
So that needs to be moved up.
You need to move that paragraph up.
It is, it, oh, to exit, oh, yeah.
In terms of...
Actually, that is, that is, that is the way it happened.
What?
That is the way it happened because we made a motion to go into executive session, and as we were leaving, Mark was, he was making that comment.
These aren't my minutes.
No, I know.
Oh, okay.
But if we need to make changes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's put it up, let's move it up above, put it up above Paul Point.
It just looks like he was in our executive session when you read it like that.
So you're keeping the one with Paul Point, then move Mark Lowell, and then the motion by Mary.
Yes.
Yep.
And just one other change, we don't have a time adjourning the meeting, so it's probably just, you know, seven...
Seven twelve is fine.
Seven, you know.
Because we came out of, we came out of executive session, and that was the end of our meeting.
So you could do it at seven thirteen.
I know, but I think we always do that.
Yeah, we do, so seven thirteen.
Yeah.
Or seven twelve, either one. Seven thirteen.
Yep.
Yep.
That's it. Now I will make a motion to accept the minutes of April 2nd as revised.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Did see you sneak in, Richard.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have any public people here to comment tonight, so we will go...
No, I'm a public person.
Are you a public person tonight?
I have to be public today.
Okay, be public. Go for it.
Project Graduation, they're having the Second Annual Scrapbooking Event Saturday, April 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Sanford High School. Registration fee is $35, and the contact is cynthia.eldridge@maine.edu if you're interested. Many vendors will be on site for shopping, and you can have a great time scrapping. And it's for a good cause for all our Acton kids over there that are graduating this year. And there's also a 5K run for Project Graduation also on May 18th. If you're interested, you can contact me.
Awesome. Thank you. Public person.
I would ask you to, I have this under correspondence, a draft of the calendar. And what I would like you to do is to carefully review this and make sure it makes sense with what you want to do, and we will vote on it at the next meeting. There won't be a problem with that. It's still under draft form in terms of being very similar to Sanford. They haven't adopted theirs yet, so I just want to make sure that we do it once and do it right. And then, I assume that you have all seen the headline.
I see it now, yeah. I'll get it tomorrow.
It's right there on the wall. And it even gets better than that because what Tammy Wells did is she gave you a thumbnail.
Oh, good.
And the thumbnail in the Journal Tribune is a...
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Oh.
So that's yours to keep.
What was the date on the Journal Tribune today?
Uh, no, it was Thursday, April 4th.
Last week.
Thank you.
And that is what I have the correspondence.
Okay. Then let's move on to staff reports, and we'll start with the superintendent's report, right? It should be pretty brief. Monday afternoon, there was a vision and strategic planning meeting that Tricia Reports has gone exceptionally well, and I just wanted to give you, from my perspective, the strategic plan for next year really needs to focus on adopting and providing staff development for the Common Core and adopting the assessment system from Smarter Balance that goes along with that. We certainly are going to want to talk about how the accommodations for that are going to be made through IT, as well as whether there's any adjustments that need to be made in terms of long-term strategic planning through maintenance and staffing. But I do want to make sure that we have an opportunity here from me that we really need to focus our staff development opportunities on implementing the Common Core because that's going to direct your vision and direct your strategic plan for the next five years.
I would like to talk with staff, I'd like to talk with support staff about the possible future need for a staff handbook. There's a lot of changes that have occurred over the last two years, and I think it's time that we codify that for staff. I've got about five or six different samples from other school systems. If you are so motivated to come in and take a look at them, Sanford's staff handbook, I know especially the high school and the junior high are online, so that would be interesting to look at. We need a policy committee meeting, and we are approaching spring, therefore it is time to look at dress code. And we probably should review the wording and adopt a policy on how we will provide for foreign exchange students and also for home-school students. You have 20 some odd students now that are under the ranks of being home-schooled, and I think it would be important for people who are considering that to know what the latest regulations are and what's permissible and what isn't. You have a very unique organization here in that all of your high school kids earn tuition or are eligible for tuition to go to Sanford High School, and how does that play out with home-schoolers? We need to really sit down and sort of reason that out together and decide, because I think it's only fair for parents to know. So that's what I have in terms of the superintendent's report, and if you want to email me some policy committee dates, that would be great. Policy is...
Jen, Kevin?
Yeah.
So just letting you know.
My schedule's pretty flexible, but for days, but we'll see what Kevin has.
See what Kevin has. Yeah, so that's my report. Next, Michael?
What should I do, principal or...
No. I put principal on last so that you could have a chance to do yours, and then they back up on the perch.
IT Coordinator's Report, please.
Mine's brief. We're starting the MWA testing, so I open the test window from April 29th to the end of May, or the first week of June, if we need to make up for the tests. There's only three months left in school, so I've been in the process of developing implementations for next year, deploying new servers and services, but it's difficult to make the plans because the state still hasn't decided on which RFP they're going with for the MLTI project. So I don't know if I'm going to be dealing with iPads, MacBooks, or something else, so that's pretty much what I'm up to. And that's it.
Any questions for Michael? Okay.
Okay, then let's move on to the Finance Director's Report.
We are putting the final touches on the budget book, and hoping to get them distributed by Friday. I've given each of you a rough copy of what they look like at this time, so if you have any suggestions or comments to change anything, please let me know as soon as possible so that we can start with the copying and distributing. I met with Michelle Romney at the Town Hall to review the art bids. We decided to give our recommendation to the selectmen to continue with our RH Smith. Increase for the school for next year, for the next three years will be $500 per year, so instead of $3,000, we'll be going to $3,500 a year. Both Michelle and I felt, after reviewing the bids, that it was a better match for us to stay where we were.
So is it $3,500 a year for three years?
Yes.
For three years, or 35, then 4,000, then...
No, it's 35 each year.
Oh, okay.
Okay. One of the bids came in, 8,000 for the school, and they were, they were quite high compared to what we had been paying, so.
Yeah, I was there when they opened the bids at the selectmen's meeting, and some of them were not very well-known, and some of them had more municipal experience than they did school, school business. So I think RH Smith has given, given us a pretty good deal price-wise, so.
Working on the quarterly reports right now. The 15th is the deadline, so hopefully I'll have all those done by Friday. And I also wanted to thank Donna and Ryan for their time and effort in helping me get this budget booklet put together. And I want to also thank Michelle and Jennifer up at the Town Hall. They've been really good at double-checking things with me as far as what the school needs for the budget process. And that's it.
Anybody have any questions for Carleen, or for the comments?
What's, what's the cover gonna be this time?
Oh, it's a piece of artwork from...
Is it?
Selected by Mrs. Davis.
Yeah?
Yes, that's awesome.
Special education. Ready?
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Special Ed.
Okay. Well, I know that you hear about the transition meetings every time, every year this time. The eighth grade students are, we're meeting on them right now and preparing their IUPs and their plans as they move forward to the high school. In fact, tomorrow is Step Up Day, and all students will be participating, correct, tomorrow morning?
Ready?
All students will be participating in a visit to the high school. And our, we have tentatively scheduled May 6th and May 8th for our transition meetings that are, where the staff from the high school come here. But that's tentative because we haven't, they haven't confirmed that that's in stone yet. And then staff development, on the early release day, I had the pleasure of working with the educational technicians, and we presented the Drummond and Woodsons webinar on staff training on the new restraint and seclusion rules. Eric Harland, who is in person, very funny, this is kind of dry, wouldn't you say? It was, but it was very informative, and I think that the ed techs really appreciated getting that information. And that's a webinar that I can actually forward to anyone within the school district. We also talked, I think the ed techs sometimes feel a little bit left out, even though they're included in everything. They don't actually do the work with the Common Core, so I tried to give them some basic, an overview and basic understanding of what the Common Core, what they, what it is, what they are, and also, we had a conversation about school culture and the vision so that they hopefully can get on board with what we're doing in terms of the vision. And what I, what I find is that everybody is, has a really, it's like a family here, and everyone feels it, and I certainly do, that there's a very strong, positive school culture in Acton. Even when we have our little disagreements, people move on and really are dedicated to kids. There's no question in my mind. I've never seen anything like it in any other place, that, you know, everybody comes together for the sake of children, and it's really wonderful, so. And, you know, we had, we had a really good discussion about that, and talked about response to intervention and their role in that, and we're really lucky here. We have wonderful ed techs who are, who are to always take advantage of staff development, and I find are the most qualified that have ever worked. So they deserve a lot of praise. They really work hard, and their day is, their stretch to the max. They work all day long. There's no, there's no downtime. So I was very happy to work with them and look forward to, again, the next teacher workday. And then, of course, extended school year, we have, we only have a small number of students this year, starting out 14, and that tends to decrease over time as parents decide whether or not to send their children. So we are seeing, we'll probably have, I'd say, 10 or 12 students for their extended school year program.
Okay.
Anybody have any comments or questions for Joy?
Mr. Brazier?
My report will be brief this evening. I'll just hit a couple of the highlights. Baseball season is in full swing. I've been working on the fields.
No pun intended.
I've been working on the fields, getting things ready. The kids have been outside practicing. So it's, it's very good, and it's a solid sign of spring. The PTG did a great job pulling off this year's talent show. I wasn't able to attend, but I've heard a lot of positive feedback from the event. And then the other thing that I wanted to inform you of this evening briefly is that I've been in touch with Scott Wyman, who is the Business Administrator for the Sanford School Department. He has replaced Michael Kuzma, who used to be the contact person whom I dealt with when we prepared our oil contract. I spoke with him this week, and they have budgeted 360 a gallon, and he is hopeful at this point that it will come in significantly less than that. As you know, we've budgeted 375, so I'm happy that we're, you know, relatively close to what Sanford budgeted, and I'll be keeping you folks informed as the contract is, is established. Other than that, I have just been plugging away, cleaning up outside.
Are we going to be doing some rekeying this summer?
The rekeying, I have got a price from Springvale Hardware. They're estimating that it will cost right around $1,200. I want to take this back to the crisis response team because it's where the discussion originated, and discuss it with the crisis response team to see if it's something that we want to pursue. So, that's a bit of it.
Anybody have any questions for you? Yeah.
Last month, we talked, you talked about you needed to wait for boiler pots.
Yes.
Is that all fixed, the boilers all going?
Still waiting.
Oh, still waiting?
Still waiting.
Oh.
And that's one of the issues that we run into occasionally is that this age of the system, sometimes it takes a little bit longer. So, but we're in good shape, and I'm hoping that, you know, in the next week or two, to maybe start turning them off.
Yeah, okay, I just wondered. I was reading the, you know.
But no, I haven't, I haven't received the, the pots. We've got, actually, I'm waiting, waiting on two repairs right now. Waiting on a circulator pump and a mixing valve. So, and that's it.
Okay. We talked about it last night, yeah. I wish you didn't. But maybe sooner before, maybe.
Okay, we're ready for...
All right.
Wait, can I just say, what's going on with the building outback?
I'm hoping, soon.
He didn't give you a day yet?
Nope, I'm going to be in contact with him this week.
Okay.
Yep.
Where does this person live?
Right in Acton.
Oh, I thought maybe you might be a long way away or something.
Nope.
Have to get on the list, you know?
Yep.
So we're gonna, we're gonna watch the screen for Tricia's report tonight. She, she had a family thing to go to tonight, and she has videotaped her report. I spoke with her yesterday and mentioned to her that I thought her report was rather lengthy, and would we need a commercial break, or would we need to pause at any places? So I don't know.
I'll pause and throw a little commercial in there.
Oh, thank you, myself. So can everybody see the screen?
Yep.
Up here behind me?
Hello, this is my first attempt at an iMovie, and it is definitely taking far more takes than I would like. So I hope you'll be patient with me. As I come to you via video, because I cannot seem to manage via two, never mind three places at once. So tonight I am at my newest son Paul's confirmation. I apologize for the conflicting schedule. I hope you will enjoy the photos that I have to go along with my report. And although it's lengthy, I promise to do my best to just summarize the key points and keep this rather brief. First point is the vision work, which is coming along nicely. Surveys are coming in, and the work continues. We are now at the point where we are looking at our vision statement to be nearly final, and the plans for the strategic plan, the long-term planning for staff development, programming, et cetera, to move forward. Speaking of staff development, on Friday morning, I met up with the Curriculum Coordinator of SAD 57, which is Massabeesic, and Sanford, as well as the Sanford High School Principal, and we went to a meeting about customized learning in Oakville, Maine. The meeting was very early and quite a distance away, but it was worth it. As I came back, very excited about what this cohort can offer Acton in the way of support as we move towards standards-based learning. Please stay tuned. Our PTG, as you know, is fabulous. So they've had the talent show that was held on March 30th, but that's not where they're going to stop. Right away, there's a new event being planned, and as you know, this coming Saturday, April 13th, bounce houses will be loaded up into the gym, and kids will be able to have a fabulous, exciting, and active start to their vacation. Next up, the calendar. Please note in my packet is the proposed school calendar for next year. I need approval. I would like you to notice that it matches greatly with Sanford, but with fewer early release days and no late starts. The first student day is scheduled for September 30th. As you know, we have a wonderful group of teachers, and I've featured several of them during this report. The first group is the kindergarten group, with Mrs. Emery, Mrs. Pedigro, Mrs. Libby, Mrs. Putnam, Mrs. Mitchell, and Mrs. Walker, all working together to help our students better understand their language. The Sound Sensible Program has been a huge success for helping many students really begin to read and write and understand the English language. They also worked with Mrs. King's fourth grade, or third and fourth grade multi-age group to read and share the love of the rainforest and the story called "The Umbrella," written by Mrs. Jan Brett. Volunteer signup sheet. In my packet, I have a proposal for a volunteer signup sheet and background check. I would like to use this as a way of better filtering and organizing the volunteers who come to school. Although we have not had any serious concerns in the past, I would like the board's support, and if necessary, a policy created. I have spoken with my regular senior volunteers, and they were very much in favor of paperwork. I'd like to start using this paper this year. Please give me your feedback and let me know what I need to do next. An email request for change of a teacher workshop day in May has been made and written as approved. I don't know if I needed to get an official board vote, but my expectation is that May 24th will be a student day, where learning can be more productive in May than at the end of June, and the teacher workshop day will be moved to June. A good news, I have an update on the Sticky Note Project. If you haven't already, please make sure you look in the Journal Tribune, go online for the article. Mrs. Michelle Reynard helped guide a literature circle group, and as you see by the library window, the Sticky Note Project has gone school-wide. We are very happy and very impressed with Hannah Bailey and Chelsea for their extra effort on keeping things positive in our school. National History Day, this is the first, but hopefully not the last, time that sixth, seventh, and eighth graders from Acton School will travel up to Augusta for National History Day. After preparing a six-month-long project, their travels up to Augusta last week were very, very important and full of learning. Thank you again to Mrs. Reeves, Mr. Putnam, the other teachers that support them in the classrooms, and Mrs. Reeves' husband for doing the driving. We also want to thank the PTG, who paid for the registration and transportation. It was a wonderful group effort and great learning experience for the kids. And finally, the Drama Club. And finally, the Drama Club. Mrs. Driscoll, with the help of Mrs. Pettigrew and Mrs. Kelly Herman, were able to pull off the first of two gatherings for Drama Club. Last Friday, Snow White, the Dwarves, and the Ninjas was presented to the school. And just when we thought I was all done, one more special note. You'll notice these wonderful pictures of our seventh and eighth graders who got to participate in another theatrical production brought to us by Penobscot Theater Players. The kids had a fabulous time and really impressed us with their Shakespeare performances. Well, that's the end of my report. I hope you've enjoyed it, and I look forward to being here physically next month. Thank you. Oh, if there are any questions, please email me. Thanks.
Well, that was good. That was different. That was good.
I like that. Now we need pictures all the time.
Yep.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna edit everybody's video report. I'm just throwing it out there right now.
I think we might get public if we have kids' pictures. You see, that's my thought.
Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Are there any reports from either-
Well, did you want to accept the reports?
Oh, sure, let's do that. Can I have a motion to accept all of the staff reports, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, now we'll move on. Do we have any reports from either the policy or the long-term planning committee?
I have no.
Policy meeting didn't meet last month.
Well, we should have a 6.3, the negotiation committees, or 6.3, 6.4. But there's nothing to report right now, so.
Right.
But next month, there should be two more committees listed there.
But that also will come under executive session, right? Those reports.
Oh, she's looking for-
Are you just looking for committees?
No, I would say where we are in public.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But we're nowhere right now.
So that's where we are, so we'll say that in public. All right.
There was one, one other thing I forgot to talk about, bring up. I was looking through the policy book, and we remember when the eighth-grade class trip, they had to meet certain standards, grades, and where are we with that? Because Trish would probably be the one, no.
I don't know.
Oh, I know, I know. But there's a policy stating that they have to have so many attendances.
As a parent, we have to sign a paper.
Right, in the beginning, right. I just wondered.
But in April-ish, they try to check up on the students who are falling and then cannot go to the project graduation for eighth grade or whatever they go up.
They don't want to find out at the front door what happened.
Did you hear anything at all about that, Jen?
I know that, I just signed a paper at the beginning of the year.
Right.
And as a parent, I just follow up with it.
Yeah, all right, well, maybe next meeting, we can find out where they are.
I think it was implemented last year, and I don't think there was any, any issues last year.
There was none last year, but a while back.
It was a couple of years ago.
Oh, I, I-
I think once we put that new, new little process.
Do you want to review eligibility next month?
No, we don't, it's not that, just-
No, we just want to check up and see, make sure that what we've put in place is in place and being carried out.
Right, so that all the kids can go, you know? Not wait till the last minute and find out someone can't go. Everybody's supposed to be doing that, so.
Okay, any unfinished business?
No.
And a new business? We have a resignation to accept from Susan Onion.
Susan Onion is your librarian, and she's notifying me that she's resigning that position effective June 30th, and she has enjoyed working with students and staff over the past six years. And she will miss her work. And they're moving to Wayne, Maine, this spring. The distance between the two towns is too far to commute.
I would say.
I don't even know where Wayne is.
Where is it? Don't know, never heard of it.
Sounds far away.
Near Bangor.
It's up by, I believe it's up by, like, Moosehead, it's-
That's far.
Because I know that, that's somewhere that they, they travel to often, so.
Okay.
So could I have a motion to accept Susan Onion's resignation, please?
So moved, with regret.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that Susan Onion's resignation as librarian be accepted with regret effective June 30th of this year. Any further discussion? All in favor? So moved. She has brought a lot to our school system. And the amount of time that she's been here as a part-time person, she certainly has made an excellent contribution to our school community while she was here. Is there any other business to come before us tonight? Yes?
As a member of the crisis response team, this evening, I have copies of the emergency planning guide. And as the board is aware, each year, you are required to annually approve the plan. So what I have done with the help of Ryan Pease is I have got copies of the guide, and I put together a little cover letter explaining why I'm making this request from the board. But basically, it is the annual approval of the plan. And I would like you to review it and consider it for approval at next month's meeting.
Okay.
And here's a copy for Kevin as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to take this and look at it at your leisure? Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a note, we'll put it on the May agenda for approval.
Okay. All right, then, if there's no, if there's no further business, then I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to just get a brief update on negotiations.
So moved, and what time is it?
Six forty.
At 6:40, I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?